Thank you for watching another Morristown Matters video. Today is February the 24th, 2022. I am running a few minutes late to this meeting and you'll find out why during my comment section, which starts at 56 minutes and 15 seconds. It's a drop a bombshell. You're gonna have to watch that. So, I appreciate all the new people that have recently joined. Check us out on Lakeway Audits on Facebook. There'll be a bunch of documents and stuff over there that I post to keep up with the ongoing election and other things within Hamline County and the city of Morristown. Please hit the thumbs up on this. YouTube's algorithm loves that. Thanks for watching, enjoy, and make sure you watch it till the end.
Motion passed, Chairman, it's all I have. Thank you. Cool, well, if you sent down there, let me get that vote, we're gonna form a motion. A second. Any comments? Saying none? Take the vote.
Item 4A, 12A, 09.
Motion passes. Okay, bump the comments regarding business on the agenda, item only.
108150 West Point Ground. Why have not the January county commission meetings been yet?
Why weren't they?
Yes, sir.
I don't have an answer to that. If I give back what you have, I don't know.
So that's why you need your backup cameras for stuff like that, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Chris White, 735 at the lead circle in District 13. I want to first of all, address item 12. Well, let's go back to item 3B that you guys just discussed with Mr. Ree from the Election Commission. Pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated, there's already a regulation on the books dealing with campaigning on state-owned property or lands, buildings, wherein there is a state agency located. Whereas the Hamline County Courthouse is home to UT Extension. UT Extension is a de facto agency of the state of Tennessee. Our regulation already exists. You guys shouldn't necessarily have to send it illegal, but I'm sure Mr. Capes can look at Tennessee Code annotated and find that regulation. It was easy enough to do a search. You pulled up under Knox County Government with the Tennessee Code citation. Moving to item 12C, dealing with Paul Lavelle and let me see how you guys have it written out here. 12C, renewal of real estate consulting agreement with Lavelle Commercial Realty. It was reported to me as a candidate for office just this past week that there are certain candidate signs on Lavelle Commercial Realty lands, local candidates. I won't name the candidate, but I think the candidate knows who he is. He's one of my candidates in the general election. Whereas these signs are on these lands and whereas it does raise a question of impropriety in local government, I would like to know what the response from county government is, whether you guys are going to address that issue, and if you're not going to address it, I would ask for your consideration and at least pushing this item to a future commission meeting, as it does raise that question of impropriety. These are the only items I have that are on the agenda and I will see you for general public comment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Landon Ojo Stevens Road. In regard to referring the Election Commission Resolution to Mr. Capps. Mr. Capps was aware and has been aware of this question issued for over a week. There was no response when I sent my complaint and concern through Mr. Gardner, who sent it to Mr. Britton. I then sent it to Mr. Capps, Mr. Sheriff Jarnigan, Albert Shipley, Mayor Britton, and Jeff Gardner, asking is the entire courthouse open for political campaigning, political literature, campaign cards? I didn't receive a reply. Of course, I'm sure you will receive a reply. But it has to be examined very closely. Not all laws apply to every county in certain ways. You have laws about state facilities, but you also have laws and concerns about public, the public courthouse, particularly in view of the federal money that is flowing throughout this courthouse. That is probably one of the main things to be looked at. I would also like to address 12C, the Lavelle contract. In a quick look for commercial real estate agents in Hamline County, I found 14, just like that. There may be more, maybe there are a few less. But every one of these 14, and the 14 includes Lavelle, should have an opportunity to submit a request for proposals or a request of qualifications and be considered for this real estate contract. If you want to be fair to the people of Hamline County, to the people of your district, and to the taxpayers, every person, every person who's qualified to be a real estate consultant should be allowed to participate in this. Of course, at the last committee meeting, there was this big, oh, we're gonna get this health department building. Whether you do or don't, that's fine. But that was used then as a crutch to say, and we need this real estate contract taken care of right now. We don't have time to do R F Q. You certainly do. I talked to the ladies after the last meeting. They said there is no timeline that you've got to have your real estate agent, of course you don't even have to have a real estate consultant, but there is no crisis on requiring that you get a real estate agent. You can do an R F Q and you should. Thank you.
Eden Agreen, 4981 Cameron Road. I'd like to speak to 12C as well. Competition's good for the consumers, it's good for the taxpayer, especially us. That's our money you're throwing away. This needs to be bid. I do remember quickly what Mayor Britton said, but he didn't say, all right, Dad, please take the time to ask some questions. I know some of you do, and thank you for the ones that do. Some of you don't, shame on you. But it needs to be bidded out so that every business in Hamline County that is qualified can have the opportunities to bid on this. And I don't care if you don't save, but $500, $500 is good for the citizens of Hamline County. It may not affect some of you that are, shall I say, well off, but the everyday taxpayer fights to pay their taxes. And we've got enough sense to know at some point you're gonna have to increase again. You can still wake up and smell the coffee and do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, we will close public comment. And we will recess this body as the Hamline County Legislative Body. Open here. Resolution 22 Dex 03 to amend zoning map of Hamline County, Tennessee by rezoning District 2 Tax Map 024, parcel 061 dot 01 to 2801 Boltman's Mountain Road, Morristown. Morristown, Tennessee from R1 to A1.
Good evening, commissioners. As you may remember, this request is from Gary and Rachel Mitchell. They are asking to rezone their property at 2801 Boltman's Mountain Road from its existing designation of R1 to A1 in order to accommodate a very small antique store. The building has remained empty for years. It would not be spot zoning. It's contiguous with other A1 property across the road. And at the last planning commission, Hamline County Planning Commission, the planning commissioners voted to send a positive request to you for approval for this amendment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And no questions? Do we have a motion? Make the motion. At this time, I'll close the Hamline County Legislative Body. Now, I have a motion. What do you need, sir?
Sir, I'll make the motion that we set this resolution to amend the zoning for this property on Boltman's Mountain Road.
Okay, second. All up there? Take the vote.
Item 7A, 12A, 09.
Thank you, motion passes. Item B? Jim Steph?
Thank you, Chairman. Item 8A, Resolution 2204, Hamline County, 27 time campus, I put it in form of motion.
Off the vote?
Item 8A, 12A, 09.
Motion passed.
Item 8B, Surface Items at Register of Deeds Office, I put it in form of a motion.
Second. The vote?
Item 8B, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 8C, Resolution 2205, Resolution before the County Commissioner of Hamline County, Tennessee applying for rebuilding American infrastructure and sustainability and quality rate bring, I put it in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Let's speak.
What is this home grant? Regret my memory.
That is the, that is the home repair program through THDA.
Thank you. Take the vote.
Item 8C, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 8D, Resolution 2206, Resolution of support for the city of Morristown, Tennessee applying for rebuilding American infrastructure and sustainability and quality rate bring, I put it in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. All up there, go ahead, vote.
Item 8D, 2BA, 29.
Motion passes.
Item 8B, Memorandum of Agreement between Hamline County Government and Morristown Emergency and Rescue Squad, I put it in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. The vote?
Item 8B, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
All I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Audit Committee, Mr. Ramon, Audit Commission Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we've got the audit committee vote, but before we do, I would like to commend all the people in the Hamline County Government for a job well done. We got a perfect score on this audit and that is something to be proud of. So, I think it's appropriate to thank them. Okay, 9A, the acceptance of the Hamline County Government Audit for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2021, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a second. Any discussion? The vote?
Item 9A, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Real State Committee, press Cutshaw. I missed one? I'm sorry. Press Committee, Ramon Board.
Thank you. 10A, this is the fiscal year 2020-23 preliminary budget plan of action, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. The vote?
Item 10A, 12A, 09.
Motion passes. Now, Real State Committee? Press.
Item 11A, request to sell Grumard Street property, as discussed before. I make that a motion.
Have a motion, have a second, have a second. We have any discussion? Saying none? Item, what's that?
Item 11A, 12A, 09.
Motion passes. Item 12, Finance Committee, Chairman of the Board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 12A is the approval of the monthly checks, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12A, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B1, Hamline County Board of Education Budget Amendment for Increase of, it's mistakenly written in here as 149, but that is actually 143, 90232, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
A motion, have a second. Any discussion?
Where, that's just a typo, like 140? Yes. And if you look back in the packet, it'll, yeah.
No discussion? Wait.
Item 12B1, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B2, Hamline County Board of Education Budget Amendment for school nutrition, an increase of 163, 047, 88, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12B2, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B3, Fund 11 Civil Defense, U N A, for $113.16, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second, have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12B3, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B4, Fund 101 for civil defense, I'm sorry, for other public safety, and this is a homeland security grant of $1,169.10, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12B4, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B5, Fund 101, Chantry Court, for $815, that's for office supplies, and I'll put it in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12B5, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B6, Fund 101, Juvenile Court, for $20,000, that's for Richard Bean, additional coverage, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12B6, 11A, 09, 101.
Motion passes.
Item 12B7, Fund 101 for Sheriff's Department for $3,400, and that is for the sale of the camper to be used in 2021. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? Saying none? Right? Frisbee?
Item 12B7, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B8, Fund 116 for margins and sanitation, $33,000 additional dollars, put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12B8, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B9, Fund 122 Drug Control Fund, 41, 375, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? Saying none?
Item 12B9, 12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B10, this is an additional in your packet, and it's for Tennessee CSI for servers, and I put that in the form of a motion.
This one here will be off the board. Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Thank you.
Jim Aker?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Alan Arwin?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Jim Steph?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
Yes.
12A, 09.
Motion passes.
Item 12B11 for office supplies, and this really is actually software, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Second. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? This one up?
Chairman, this is a team of our court, I will be starting again, but since they did get brought up on this one, clear.
This one also will be off the board.
Jim Aker?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Stoney, 101.
Saying.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Alan Arwin?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Jim Steph?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
Yes.
12A, 101, for living rates, 101.
Motion passes.
Item 12C, and I would like for Mayor Bill Britton to speak to this one on the renewal of the real estate consulting agreement with Lavelle Commercial Realty. Thank you, Chairman. And before we get to the item on the agenda, earlier this week, I had a visit from representatives of the Emergency Communications District for E911, talking about the health department building and its possible availability if we pursue a new health department building. And so, Robert Lane, the Chairman of the Board, and Eric Carpenter, the Director of E911, are here to discuss their offer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 911 Center of Hamline County, I came to the information that you have, it was brought to you that the state health department desires to build a new health department for Hamline County, and that using their federal monies for COVID relief, that they are willing to fund 75% of that as we understood it, with the county needing to fund 25% of that. The information that we had understood was that that 25% from the county, based upon the type of building plan that they have somewhere in a four to four and a half million dollar building that they're discussing, would mean that the county's 25% would be somewhere in the $1 million to $1.2 million range. Myself and our Chairman approached the county mayor earlier this week with what we hope that this commission will see as a win-win-win scenario. Hamline County Emergency Communications District, the 911 Board meets in regular session in the morning at 8 o'clock, and the Board members have asked me to come and say to you, as the county commission today, that the Board would be prepared to offer and to entertain discussion with the county, this county court, that Hamline County 911 would provide that 25% match to the county, so that the health department building could be done, a new building could be built for zero tax dollars. What that would do then is we would ask that when the health department vacates its current location on West Main Street and goes into the new building, that that money would be given as a purchase for that property. Hamline County 911 wishes to purchase the current health department location there, 331 West Main. What this would do is three things. Number one, the county would be getting a new health department with zero tax dollars. Number two, Hamline County 911, who is woefully out of space and have been for a considerable period of time, would be able to acquire a facility that would expand and do what 911 services for Sibian County and all of our emergency responders need for another 25 to 30 years easily from that location. Plus, when we leave the current facility that we're in, which is a portion of the sheriff's department's workhouse, then that area that we occupy currently in that county building would be available to you to repurpose however you do so. That's the win-win-win that we certainly hope that the county would consider, and I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding that offer. Director, could you elaborate on the zero tax? Well, the, it would not require a tax increase, I guess is what anger through you to pass that along. Perhaps that money would come from your fund balance if you did not do that, perhaps you may have another offer, perhaps you want to do that a different way. But you would not be going into the, into the county coffers for that 1 to 1.2 million. The fund balance that Hamline County 911 has is a fund balance that we have been able to build over the 32 years of Hamline County 911 being in existence, through the fiscal responsibility of the Board over those years, and through the collection of the surcharge data, surcharge fund that 911 uses to operate. And so, when I say zero tax dollars, what I'm saying is, is that there would not be any reason for the county to have to go back to their funding, which is tax dollars, in order to make that happen. And then, and we would be able, Hamline County 911 would be able to sustain that purchase in its fund balance and still have the ability to maintain operation at its current level. Okay, that, that would answer the question there, that you come from your fund balance and what you collected, like you said, for over the past 32 years of existence. That's correct. We would, the, the offer that we are making to supply this 25% match would come from Hamline County 911's fund balance. Thank you, sir. Yes.
Director Carpenter?
Mr. Carpenter.
Would E911 be coming to this body to request funds to renovate and/or move the emergency health communication services to the new building, or will they take care of that out of their own budget?
My intent, if the county were to accept this proposal... My intent, if the county were to accept this proposal, my intent would be to present to 911 Board that we would not only make this purchase out of our fund balance, but also renovate the Health Department that we would be acquiring to what we needed for that building, also out of Hamlin County 911 fund balance. So for that portion, it would not be our, it would not be my immediate recommendation to return to this body for that funding.
Eric, I think you're located over here in the OED Secasta office.
No, sir, we're over on the Justice Center campus, but we're in a portion of the building that's attached to the workhouse.
Attached to the workhouse?
Yes, sir.
All of your office?
All of it, yes. Administration, dispatch operations, our technical services, all of our training division, quality assurance. Everything that we do is in what is just under 2,100 square feet for 11 emergency service agencies. And we are woefully out of space.
You're, where you're located now, have you got enough work going on to fill up that old Health Department?
We believe that we do. Not only would we do, do we need the office space, we also, we have no archival storage. We have no office space for our IT and technical services. We are, we are always, and we thank the county for their participation in this, but we're always asking the county or the city or one of the other emergency service agencies for a conference room or space to do employee testing, to do new hire testing, for our in-service training. That would give us a training, a training area. It would give us office space, it would give us archival storage, it would give us the ability to expand dispatch operations in the future. And we'd have some little room for growth. But then we'd also be able to have the space that we need for IT technical networking for all of the new NG 911 components that the state is moving toward. We absolutely can make use of that full building. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What happens to your fund balance? Do you complete your fund balance?
It would not complete the fund balance. I have, it's, what I will say to our Board in the morning when we meet is that the fund balance is strong enough to be able to offer this amount of money for the 25% in order to purchase this building from the county and to renovate it and still have a fund balance that would meet a minimum standard that our local Board sets. I say that that way, Mr. Chairman, because there is no guideline, no statute, no rule or law that we're aware of from the state ECB that requires us to maintain a specific level of fund balance. But our local Board adopted a rule to do that. And we would be able to still meet that while purchasing and renovating the Health Department property.
Just getting clear on that, this is going to cost, I thought the figure was about 1.4 million is going to take the county to match up with 25% of what the state has. I'll have to look back on it though. So it's 1.2, 1.3. And what you, let me ask you, what you would do if the county votes to let you have that building, you would take out of your fund balance and give it back to the County Commission? Or we can go ahead and pay 25% to build one somewhere else?
That is correct, sir.
Director, or should I say Colonel, looking in uniform, the, we're talking about a couple years down the road. Now, as you've seen here in the last year, I guess it is, how things jumped the prices. What is your intent if some reason, two years down the road, it's going to be like too many?
Well, we would hope that once the agreement, it's my understanding, and the County Mayor, I'm sure could speak to this more clearly than I can. Obviously, this is in the intense stages of this. But as, as the Health, as the State Health Department is using the money that they have to do this, they're going to have to get these agreements and these contracts in place to begin to make this happen so that they can spend that money within the guidelines of the federal grant that allows them to do so. And so we would hope that we would have a more firm figure sooner rather than later. And with that, should that fluctuate, certainly we would take that to the Board, take a look and see how much fluctuation that is so that that offer could still hopefully be there. I can't speak for the 9 members of 911 Board other than to give this proposal today. I would have to take that back to them. I feel confident that they would be, they would entertain that at discussion. But at that point in time, you know, we would.
I think what you get a surprise like we did on the table.
I would, I would hope that that surprise wouldn't be there, but I would take that back to the, back to the 911 Board.
Any, any other questions for Director Carpenter? We thank the Commission for their consideration.
Just a couple of things, just to clarify some questions. As far as the county's share of the new Health Department, it would be capped, the match would be capped at $1,137,500. So if, let's say, 25% of the project is more than that, the state would pick that up. So the most that the county would be responsible for would be the $1,137,500.
Does our Health Department got a shape there? It seems like this all of a sudden, it just popped up out of nowhere, they want to build a new Health.
Well, before COVID, but before COVID, the Director, Sherry Montgomery, mentioned that they needed more space. She mentioned that to me. And then, so it wasn't a total surprise when the new Regional Director, Sue Juddlin, contacted me and said that this opportunity is there. And she, she worked there during the interim before Ashley Lyons was hired as the County Director. Sue worked there. She, she identified the need for, not necessarily more space. If you remember last week, she said, "We need 14,000 square feet." And that's what they have, is 14,000 square feet, except that it's on two levels without an elevator. And it's just not efficient for their use and for their program. And so she's the one who identified and recommended that Hamlin County be one of two counties in her district to receive funding for, for, now, the building, the building, Wayne Building is in good shape. It's in good shape.
Then we got, the state's got all this money they want to give away. They want to give us $4 million to build a Health Department when they took away $580,000 to do our only public pool in Hamlin County. We can't control what the state does, but you know, you take away from one, you give to the other. Next question, is there any way you could look at this old Lakeway Hospital up here and do that as a Health Department?
That could be an option to look at, yes.
They got all power, they got elevators, they need.
And, I mean, that, that would be something that we, I think we should evaluate, yes.
Thank you. Any more questions before we?
Just to address some of the statements that were made regarding the request to renew the LaBelle contract is, is, now, the message that I have from, from Ms. Juddlin in the State Department of Health is they want Hamlin County to enter into a contract and to agree to enter into this offer with the state in April. And they want the county to sign a contract in April. And so the reason that I requested the renewal is so that we would have, we could have at least present in April, if not in March, probably in April, an idea or a concept of where the Health Department may go. Or in what area of town. They mentioned last week and have mentioned to me in conversations that their clientele is basically in the core of Morris Town. So they would want to stay in Morris Town, not way out west or way out east. And so there's, there's going to be a need for some assistance in finding a location. And so that's, that's why I'm before you with this request, as well as, as the job that LaBelle Commercial Realty has done for the county. They've done a good job previously with them. So that's the purpose of this. Yes.
Do they have time? They get here?
It is, yes. If, if, now, Mike, let me say this. If, if you, as a commission, do not want an idea of where we go, if you don't want the search for the site to start before April, then, you know, we can delay it. But it depends on what you guys want to do. My thinking was that the commission would want an idea of where it would go and maybe a concept of where we go before committing to the project.
Mayor, I think it's imperative that we keep it centrally located. It's always been here, that's my thing. So in that, and Mr. Neesmith's idea, Lakeway Regional Hospital being looked at, I think that would be valid. Just anything to keep us in town for that.
And while we got, while we have it offered to us, before something happens, they jerk it from us, I think we need to go ahead and pursue it and get it underway.
Mayor, can we sign the contract without having the proposal that, essentially, we will sign the contract, something we will provide our partner?
Yes, yes.
To add to that question, though, if we don't know where it's going to be, I mean, it might, it's a win-win, kind of these proposals we're hearing. But what if it's decided to go away west? I don't know that I can support that. I think it needs to stay centrally located. I think it's imperative that we find this property as soon as possible before we accept this, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the committee, the way it's been explained to me is this whole project, the state's providing 75% of the dollars, okay? And then the match may come from 911, depending on what their Board does and whether you accept it. Now, this project is a county project. It would be, we would manage it, you know, it would go through our procurement system. And the Health Department would want input into the design of the space, which makes total sense. So it would be a county project. So, you know, as far as location goes, you guys will make the decision of where it will go.
Whether we do that before April or after we get everything back, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
What I've heard Thomas from you is we can go ahead and sign the contract with the state and then long as we're locked in with the state, then we can go out and find us a place to build.
Correct.
At that time, we've got time to go out and send this thing out for, I don't think it would be for bids, but get other real estate people, you know, act. So we're not locked in with one real estate person. I mean, we bid on everything here. We bid on Hell House, we bid it two or three times. We had one bid and we come back and then we got four or five more. I think we need to get bids on this. That's my, that's my opinion.
Item 12C, put that in the form of a motion. Have a motion? Have a second. Any more discussion? Saying no?
Item 12C, seven yes, five no.
Motion passes.
Eight.
No, no, fail, motion fails for that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Ask a question then, it is, so I'm reading from this decision then, is it, you all wish that we go ahead and prepare an RFQ and issue an RFQ for real estate services? Is your intention then to enter into the agreement or are you going to wait?
I'd like to make a note.
I think at this point, I'd make the motion that we enter into RFQ process.
And I think in that motion, that we go ahead and enter into a contract with the state that we will provide 25%. And if we can do that prior to getting the RFQ.
But I disagree with that on one count. Thomas, that if they've decided to go on an extreme level, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I just don't know. That's why I want to know.
They just said that they were paying the overages, this is all we're.
I understand, Stu, if you put it all the way on the west end of town or all the way over east of town.
We're not letting them give that. Mayor's already said, we make that decision after.
I got you, but if that's.
Well, I'll just make another motion after.
That's fine, I just, my point is to, I'm concerned by experience.
Thank you for the motion.
I make the motion that we enter, allow Mayor to begin the RFQ process for real estate services in this town.
Okay.
Or, or before the year, I guess, your contract for any county services, is that what the intention was? Or do you just?
Two years, two years.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second, second, any more? This is off the board. So we're being voted off the board.
Jim Aker?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
Yes.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Alan Arwin?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Kind of question.
This, this, for Bill to go out and do RFQs for a real estate person, that's what he's for. I vote for that, yes.
Jim Steph?
Yes.
Taylor Ward? That's 11 yes, one no.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we give County Mayor authorization and approve going forward with this and signing the contract with the state with the county's responsibility at a maximum of $1,137,500. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion, second.
Just one thought is, do you want any provision in that motion about the 911 offer? Or do we want to wait till March? Or are we committed, are we committed to this project if the 911 offer is off the table?
With my motion, Mayor, we're committed with the 911 offer off the table or on the table because this is a, I hope that we can do this. I fully support the 911 system and I hope that they can gain access to this building. But even if that falls through, this is still a win for Hamlin County, in my opinion. And I'd like a motion that we go forward with.
Mayor, I'd like to add just one thing. I think also, this is a win-win, especially I love the proposal to 911, I do, I think it's a win-win. I just think we're just a little bit premature. In this instance, we have a deal April to sign the contract in this. And that's all, I'm not loving the answer when it comes down to it, I just feel like we should do it later.
Jim Aker?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
No.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Eileen Arwan?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Jim Stepp?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
Yeah.
Just, just to make sure that we have a second. Did we have a second? On the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do we have any idea what the value of the current health department is?
No, um, you said the tax. The, the assessor's office has a value of, of $1,535,500 on it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chair of Board. Uh, public comments, non-agenda items.
Hey, Bickering, 4981 camera route. Thank you, Mr. Neesmith, for asking the question. And for you folks that were pushing for the wheelchair, I know some, one or two of you are wheelchairs, I don't understand what the rush is, please wake up this municipality. is the county courthouse open for campaigning and candidate cards?
No, I would say no, because by understanding, the state's already had a ruling on that, but we will double check, we'll hold that until we get a legal, a legal read on it.
Thank you, Mr. Neesmith.
Give me it.
Chris Black, once again, 7235, LA Circle, in the 13th District. Hopefully I can land a little bit of clarification on what this Holden was just asking about. So I'll start off with the election concerns that I have, that I know that the Commission can deal with. First of all, I'll start with campaign signage. As you guys know, I've counted at least 23 people on the ballot in this room tonight. As y'all know, campaign signs are incredibly expensive, right? Everybody knows that. However, those trash all over this county from these campaign signs, it happens every election. It seems like this year is a little bit different, though. Obviously, the weather's not helped with that from when today and yesterday, but all over the Cedar Hill District, we've got campaign signs down in the roads with the states, often tires, possibly all of that stuff. We have signs that are on utility poles in direct violation of Tennessee Code annotated 2-19144. Key examples are on Frank Hodge Road within the 13th District, in addition to Kibble's Ridge, which may be in the Manway or Panda Creek Districts. More than that, there are also signs for all candidates, including quite a few of you guys that are on this commission within the side triangles, which is against city ordinances. I'm not trying to gripe about it. Heck, after this primary with the Republicans, I'll have about 300 signs out myself. But we all need to do a little bit better job, I would ask, if that commission issue a statement to all candidates through a request to the election commission to comply with Tennessee Code on the matter. We don't need this county jumped up any more than it already is. As for campaigning there at the courthouse, I will give you the direct citation from Tennessee Code that I looked at. It is 2-19-206. The header is "Use of State-owned Property for Campaigning, Advertising, or Activities." It then goes down under subsection A to discuss any political division and/or subdivision of the state of Tennessee. Whereas in all of the dead and requisitions for the Justice Center, it clearly says at the top of each one of those, Hamblen County, Tennessee, a political subdivision of the state of Tennessee. It would seem that this section of Tennessee Code would apply. Something else that I would like to discuss is Mayor Britton's concerns and everyone else's concerns on the tax situation. I'm kind of nifty, you guys, to be honest with you. Back in October, I wrote every single one of you in an email asking for your position on the expenditures under the American Recovery Act. I got one response back from Mayor Britton. Thank goodness he wrote me that. Nonetheless, I asked about the potential of a tax increase. For causing the citizen's tritium, it said that if there were any further expenditures, a tax increase, increase would have to happen. However, in talking with many of you since then, you seem to think that won't. Well, in Mayor Britton's own words in an email sent to me in October, he said during the position, a presentation to this commission, he made it clear that financially, any additional project, again, any additional project will require additional.
We appreciate it. Anybody else?
My name's Tony, and I'm here to talk about two things. I didn't speak earlier because I was a little flabbergasted about what happened outside. More in a better way than in a discouraging way. You all, the Commissioners of Hamblen County, have given the Sheriff's Department control over the courthouse. The statute for Tennessee is 5-7-108. The sheriff's only powers at that courthouse is to stop intruders in trespassing. That's the only power they have, other than to keep it clean, sanitary, and safe for the inmates. That's it. That's all their power has. So, I've brought this up already, not to this board, but we're gonna kind of paint with, paint with numbers here. If I can't take my camera into the common area of the courthouse according to the Constitution of America, but I can bring it into this courthouse, and I can record regardless if court is in session or not, if I want to go into the tax, uh, office here, I can video record, because I have, without no issue. But I get harassed, I get assaulted at the Justice Center. Why? Because I exposed them. And I tried to turn in a complaint on Friday. I was assaulted by a deputy, and he was armed. I was surrounded, I was threatened with arrest, and then they let me go. They let me walk out of there. And cowardly today, as I walk in, I'm given a summons. I'm given a summons for being in there trying to give a complaint. And before you leave, Sheriff, I want to file a complaint with you. According to your own policy, I can file a complaint at any time with any law enforcement officer, and before you leave tonight, I would like to file a complaint with you. The next thing I would like to talk about, I only got 24 minutes, I'm gonna make, 24 seconds, I'm gonna make this quick. The Sheriff's Department, the DA, is aware of who has been bringing contraband into the jail. They have video evidence of it, they have evidence of those people dating people who are high up working in the jail. That is gone under, and the investigation has stopped until after the elections. Something needs to be looked in onto that. That's a cover-up.
I'd like to respond on record that anybody that filed a complaint with the Hamblen County Sheriff's Department, we have a form for that complaint. You must fill the form out completely. You can just put your first name on there and no address and any subscription amount. Those spaces are third to fill out. So if you don't fill it out completely, it's not a complaint in our eyes. So, Tony, you can come over anytime you want to and file a complaint with the form that we have.
Why does the form say optional? On the top of it, it says optional.
I'm trying to talk to you.
Well, you're giving bad advice, you're going against what your policy says.
Here is the facts that Esco Johnigan was leaving out. If you look at the top of this citizen's complaint form, it says persons making report optional but helpful, which means I don't have to fill it out. On this section over here, it talks about, number one, reports or complaints of officers' employees' misconduct must be accepted from any person at any time.
Anybody else?
I don't know, Joe Stevens, Row. I'm a little bit puzzled by your vote on the health department when the requirement is not needed, there's no vote needed until April. You voted to approve a contract that you haven't seen. Anybody remember the 10-day rule? You can't do that. So you might as well put this on your agenda for March and get the contract by the committee meetings in March, so you and the public can see this deal. Two other items I have regarding, regarding votes. Back in September of 2021, at a committee meeting, you voted to file a lawsuit against those, including myself, Ed Negrin, and several others, who were wearing a piece of foam on their shirts or around their necks. I will not comment on the validity of that vote, your attorney should address that with you. What I ask is, if that September 2021 vote was not valid and did not authorize a lawsuit, then you need to let all of the people who are wearing that piece of foam know that. Don't leave that hanging over us. Again, it's a matter of fairness and justice and doing the right thing. The other items, you took a vote in October of 2021 on a motion by Mr. Goins and a second by Mr. Stepp to, and I quote, seek a declaratory judgment, asking that the Hamblen County Sheriff's Department or a Hamblen County Constable be authorized to remove anyone from the commission meeting who refuses, refuses to obey the rules of the body. It is now four months later. Are you going to file with the court for a declaratory judgment or not? If so, when? If not, rescind it. Again, don't leave things hanging out there. I don't know if it's that your attorney is not doing it for whatever reason, but if you're not gonna do it, man and woman, open and say so. Thank you.
Is there a deadline?
No, you can leave it hanging over us for a year if you want to.
Okay.
But in a decent world, you could authorize a lawsuit, do it.
Anyone else? Seeing now, we will close the public comment section. Announcements, March meeting Monday, March 14th, 5:30 right here in the courtroom. March commission meeting Tuesday, March 24th, 5 o'clock right here. Any question? Anybody got anything?
Mr. Chairman, just one, one announcement I'd like to make is, is, you'll see in the next week or so, um, a, a, a public survey will appear on, on the county website, also on our Facebook page, and it's the same, the similar survey that we did a year ago, that we showed you the outcome of the survey during the budget process. It's just to get public input on, on what they feel, how they feel about our services, which are the services most important to them, and which services that they'd like to see more time and effort and money into. So that, that'll surface in the next week to 10 days, and just want to encourage you to just thank, tell, uh, tell your friends, and you can go and sit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We stand.